Good evening and welcome to a special meeting of the Cupertino City Council, the Planning Commission, and the Housing Commission. Today is April 27, 2021. Madam City Clerk, if you would please conduct the roll.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Way?
Here.
Councilmember Willie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chow is not on yet. Mayor Paul?
And I'm here.
And Planning Commissioner Capile is not yet present. Planning Commissioner Maripatla. Planning Commissioner Saxina. Vice Chair Scharf. And Chair Wang?
Aye. Here.
Housing Commissioner Bose?
Present.
Housing Commissioner Gandicota? Housing Commissioner Tadakari? I see Commissioner Tadakari. Vice Chair Parrish?
Present.
Chair Cunningham?
Here.
And I do see Planning Commissioner Saxina has logged on.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. So tonight's study session is a special joint-study session between the City Council Planning Commission and the Housing Commission. And the topic is our housing element update. We will have a staff report first. And because between the City Council and the two commissions, we have 15 people. What I am asking is that people refrain from asking questions until the entirety of the staff report, or staff reports as it goes, is or are completed. And so with regard to the totality of time, I do see six attendees here from the public. If there were significantly more, I probably would have constrained the time to about five minutes each in total, keeping in mind that we do have 15 of us. But I think we can, at this point, expect a total amount of time for each of us of six minutes. And let me just clarify that that is going to be combined between your questions before we go to the public comment, and then, as well as the discussion and any comments or follow-up questions after the public comment. And I will be keeping track of the time. My timer has all 15 of us indicated. And so that everyone stays on track with regard to the timing, I'll just be calling out half a minute each. So if you go from six minutes to five minutes and 30 seconds, I'll let you know it's at five minutes and 30 seconds. When you have the floor, you have the floor. So feel free to ask anybody a question, engage in the discussion. But until I indicate you no longer have the floor, your clock will be running. And so what I recommend that you do is, if you have more content, just try to make sure that the people that you're engaging in the discussion with, or if you're asking the staff a question, are succinct and prompt within your own timing constraints. Okay, so with that, I'll go ahead and hand this over to our city manager, who will introduce any staff that will be in charge of the delivery of the report. Without further ado, Madam City Manager Fong?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to hand this off to, promptly hand it off to Mr. Ben Fu, Director of Community Development. And I believe we have some presentations so that we can kind of move through this efficiently. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam City Manager. Mr. Mayor, council commissioners, good evening. Ben Fu, Director of Community Development. This is, this topic is the fifth of such topic presentation that we've had in the last 11 months or so. And this is also the first of the two-part series that we plan on bringing to you regarding the housing element. With me tonight, we have our planning manager, Pugh Gosh, who's been helping to manage the process. We also have the members of the Santa Clara County's Planning Collaborative Technical Support Team, Bernd Driscoll, and Josh and Paul. Pugh will do a better presentation for the gentleman. We also have our housing attorney, Consulting Housing Attorney Barbara Kautz on camera here with us tonight as well. With that, I will then promptly hand off to Pugh. And then you should be seeing a presentation by Paul and Josh shortly. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, and commissioners. I am here to introduce Josh Abrams and Paul Penninger, who are both from Bernd Driscoll. They are here to discuss the housing element update. As Ben mentioned, this is a two-part kickoff-study-session series that the city is hosting as part of the Santa Clara County Planning Collaborative. One of those, the study session tonight is sort of included with the city's package of services that they receive from the Planning Collaborative. And this is just to introduce the idea of what a housing element update is, what is required, what are the technical requirements of preparing a housing element update, and how to navigate that process, in a sense. And there'll be a brief discussion about, you know, what the timeline is for adoption of that. It is a state mandate, and I'm sure Paul and Josh will go over that in more detail. The second study session, you know, will be more focused around potentially sites that, you know, would be acceptable by the city and other media topics. And then we'll also, you know, potentially allow the council and commissions an opportunity to explore best practices in preparing a housing element update. And without any further ado, I will hand it off to Paul and Josh.
Thank you, Pugh. This is Paul. And Josh is going to say a couple words about Bernd Driscoll as a firm first. Let me go over the agenda. Sorry. So I'm Paul Penninger with Bernd Driscoll. We'll give a more full introduction in a minute. Today, we're going to talk about the housing element. And all of its required parts, the structure, and the timing of updating the housing element, as well as something called the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, and the methodology for determining that. And the new requirements and resources in this housing element update round, and then finally, timeline, process, and next steps. And most importantly, we'll be here to answer questions and to engage in a dialogue with you council members and commissioners and the public. Josh, are you still with us?
Hi, everybody. Sorry, I was muted. I am Josh Abrams. I'm a principal at Bernd Driscoll. We're a small city planning firm that works with cities around the Bay Area and around the country. I think we're most well-known for our housing policy work. So this is a topic we know well. This is actually my third, I think Paul's, third housing element cycle that we've been through. And then we're staffed to the Santa Clara County Planning Collaborative, and we're appearing in that role today. So the Santa Clara County Planning Collaborative is less than a year old. It's a group, it's a collection of all the jurisdictions in Santa Clara County that want to work together on housing policy. And we, our role is to support them. So the topics are really decided by the cities. The funding comes from jurisdictions this year. There's a small supplement from the REAP grant through the state. But basically, the funding comes from all the cities, and whatever their priorities are is what we work on. We're really focused on saving jurisdictions' time and resources. We know that no one has to participate. So unless we make life better for staff, for councils, unless we make things less expensive or higher quality, no one will participate or fund the Planning Collaborative. I'll just give one real quick example how it's helpful to collaborate. Cities can use ADUs, accessory dwelling units, in their, when to help get their housing elements certified. Rather than every city trying to figure out what affordability level ADUs tend to rent for, we did a statewide survey of 10,000 people that had recently built ADUs are coming up with safe assumptions about what affordability is, and will actually work with the state to vet those assumptions. And then, any cities are welcome to use, build off of those assumptions. And no, you don't have to use them, but if you choose to use them, it hopefully will save you time and money. And a really big point is we respect local autonomy. We have no goal besides to be useful to jurisdictions. We're not advocates. If a jurisdiction doesn't want to adopt a policy, that's fine. If they want to adopt a policy, and we can be helpful, we try and be helpful.
Great. Thanks, Josh. So let's get into the meat of it. What is a housing element? Well, it is, as many of you know, a required element of the general plan for every California city and county. It's updated on a schedule of every five to eight years. And that schedule is on a rolling basis throughout the state, depends on what region you're in. The current planning round that's upcoming for the Bay Area jurisdictions is between 20, sorry, 2023 and 2031. I almost couldn't like get all the way to the next decade. Can you believe it's going to be 2031? It's a plan for accommodating housing needs for all segments of the community. And we'll talk about what that means in a minute when we talk about how to analyze housing needs. And it is, as Pugh mentioned, a state requirement. It's a mandated part of the general plan. It must be completed per state law. And it's also a once-in-a-decade opportunity to think about how to create locally appropriate housing strategies. So many communities, including Cupertino in the past, in updating housing elements, have used it as an opportunity to really think about what do you want your housing stock to look like as you move forward as a community, and how it's going to evolve over time to meet the changing needs of all parts of the community. In terms of the structure of the housing element, it's pretty straightforward. It involves, of course, public participation, that we like to see before, during, and after the update process. A review of the previous housing element. So you want to look at the previous housing element and decide, you know, what's worked and what hasn't worked. An analysis of housing needs. That's a thorough analysis of all different housing needs for all parts of the community. And then, related to that, what are the governmental and also non-governmental constraints to housing development and to the ability of housing to meet all parts of the housing need for the community? Perhaps the most important part of the housing element is the sites inventory and analysis. That is, where you identify suitable sites are for future housing development, and then you analyze what potential constraints are to that development, whether those constraints are environmental, or infrastructure-related, or other. And then finally, the sixth part of the housing element is goals, programs, and policies, what we're going to call here, local housing strategies, which is really all that is. It's all of the things that you want to do proactively as a community to address your housing needs. The typical process for completing this is actually, you know, fairly complicated in terms of all of the steps that have to be completed. And staff, as you'll see in a moment, have put together a really helpful graphic timeline that shows where we are in the process, and will provide you with regular updates throughout the housing element update process, so you can see how you're moving through all of these different required steps. Always, as I mentioned before, outreach and engagement occurs throughout the housing element update process. The second step is research and gathering. You prepare a draft plan. Go to Planning Commission and City Council, perhaps also the Housing Commission, for review, comments, and then submit that draft plan to State HCD for review. You will then revise the plan as needed, and assuming that it meets HCD approval, adopt the plan, at which point the plan would receive certification from the State Department of Housing and Community Development as being in compliance with state law. And this all needs to take place in this housing element round before January of 2023. Here is a much easier-to-understand graphic that shows all of those steps better than the words I just said. And you can see the big gold star is where we are today, in spring of '21, with the first Housing Commission, Planning Commission, City Council Joint Study Session. And then you can see all of the various milestones in blue that need to be completed before getting to full adoption, and then final certification by the State Department of Housing and Community Development by winter of 2022 slash January '23. The items highlighted in orange are some of the most important opportunities for community feedback. But as you can see, all across the top, you have ongoing public outreach, which I think is a really critical component of the success of any housing element update. It's really frequent, creative, rigorous, community outreach. So the housing element that you saw before on your screen that was adopted last by Cupertino in 2015 is subject this round to a variety of different, and in some cases, more rigorous state laws. We're going to highlight here just a couple of the state laws that we think are the most critical for you to understand as decision-makers, and that have kind of the most thoroughgoing effect on all of the sections of the housing element. And then we'll talk specifically about how these state laws and other requirements impact specific sections of the housing element as we go through section by section in the study session. The two laws that we've highlighted here are AB 1397, which essentially applies more scrutiny, or requires jurisdictions in updating the housing element to apply more scrutiny when they're using non-vacant sites, that's sites that already have commercial mixed-use or residential development on them. And you want to indicate that those sites are suitable for housing development during your housing element planning period. So more scrutiny for non-vacant sites, and in particular, requires additional analysis that makes it difficult to use smaller sites, sites that are less than half an acre, and larger sites, sites that are 10 acres or more. In addition, reused sites designated for lower-income housing must permit by right approval. And we can talk more about what by right approval means according to HCD, and how that might match up with what you understand as being by right in Cupertino. Another big law that was passed that's affecting really every section of the housing element update, and all parts of the housing element update, is a law called AB 686, which is about affirmatively furthering fair housing. And this is really about building issues of social and racial equity and fair housing into all parts of the housing element update. It requires more thorough study of housing demographics. It requires that public engagement reaches all segments of the community, including segments of the community that are typically underserved or underrepresented in public forums. And it requires that the plan for the sites, the sites inventory, rather, take into account opportunities for lower-income housing, and that the citing of housing does not disproportionately affect low-income communities of color. And then finally, it asks jurisdictions to look at policies and programs that advance equity in light of this new law, AB 686, affirmatively furthering fair housing. So that's a lot. I'm sure people will have questions about that, those, that kind of high-level review of those two important state laws. We also want to point out that there, in addition to the new requirements and the new state laws that have been passed since the last time you updated your housing element, there's lots of new resources. And perhaps most importantly, beyond the Santa Clara County Housing Collaborative, which Josh and I are staffing, and which your staff have been participating, so that's bringing local technical assistance and support through the collaborative. Beyond that, through the regional agencies, there's something called the Regional Housing Technical Assistance Program, or REAP, that's providing ongoing trainings and technical assistance and tools that are available to local communities and your staff to update the housing element. I'm going to point out a couple of those tools here, which are already available online, and I think that we provided links to them in the staff report. And at least in the case of the Housing Needs Data Packet, you have a link to that also on your city website. So Housing Needs Data Packet, which is essentially a first-level summary of housing needs based on U.S. Census data, State of California data, and local data sources, regional data sources that you can use to build as the building block for your needs assessment, should you choose. Staff are also at ABAG, and we're assisting with this process, are also working on a housing element site selection tool to support local planning staff with completion of the housing element through providing some upfront analysis about what sites would be suitable for housing development based on identified environmental, infrastructure, and other constraints. So there are new requirements, but there's also lots of new resources. And in fact, you know, an unprecedented amount of new resources that are being dedicated to the housing element in this update round. I'm now going to walk through each section, each of the six sections of the housing element. We'll leave you really the last section, the goals and policies, to the next full council study session, which is going to be on May 11. And that'll give you a full opportunity to really talk in greater depth about housing strategies. So we'll focus on maybe the first five parts of the housing element this evening, starting with public participation. So as we said before, it should start before the housing element is updated formally, rather, before the update process formally begins, and then continue throughout all parts of the update process. It needs to involve all segments of the community. That's all economic segments of the community, all linguistic segments of the community, all ethnic segments of the community. It needs to be as encompassing as possible. And then, of course, the public participation needs to be described in the housing element and summarized, and particularly, how it's incorporated into the housing element goals, policies, and programs or strategies, what the meaning of the public participation was. HCD want to see that there was a meaningful effort to reach out to the community, and that the community's feedback has been taken seriously. We wanted to point out, as we're going through each of these required sections, some of the comments that jurisdictions in Southern California have already received from HCD on their draft housing elements. So I mentioned before that each part of the state is on a slightly different schedule for updating their housing elements. And the San Diego County jurisdictions, and Los Angeles County jurisdictions, and others in Southern California are ahead of where we are in the Bay Area. And many of the cities have already received pretty extensive comment letters. And so we can learn from those comment letters as we update our housing elements in the Bay Area, and make sure that we're proactively addressing the types of comments that we might receive. So one comment that's been received about public participation is related to affirmatively furthering fair housing, that law that I talked about before. And that is that public participation needs to take into account all parts of the community, including organizations that represent lower-income and special-needs households. And that when you're making information available, that it should be available in a way that is suitable for the communities that you're reaching out to, in the right languages, posted in the right forums, and that a meaningful attempt has been made to engage as much of the community as possible. So this is an example HCD comment. I won't read it. You can, you have it in your PDF that's been sent out in advance of this meeting. But you can see that the HCD reviewers are really taking seriously this idea of affirmatively furthering fair housing in public participation. The next section of the housing element is review and revise. That's where you review your previous housing element, you describe your progress and implementation, you analyze the effectiveness of that adopted housing element at doing what it said it was going to do. Did you actually implement the policies and programs that you said you were going to implement? If so, did they work? If not, why? Perhaps, you know, some analysis around that. What were the lessons that were learned? And what can be changed or adjusted? There is also an ongoing requirement that the city of Cupertino, along with every other jurisdiction in California, update the State of California on progress towards meeting housing element goals through something called an annual progress report, or APR. That APR, once again, is something that's posted on the city's website, and you can see there what Cupertino's progress has been. And that is also something that will be built into this review and revise section. It's really kind of taking a comprehensive look and thinking, what did we do that was effective? What did we do that wasn't effective? And what are the lessons learned from that? And how can we build that into this update process? One piece of good news about this revised review and revise section is that in the comment letters that I've reviewed, and your attorney, may have something to add here, very little HCD comment on this section. So I'm going to go on to the next section, which is housing needs. So the housing needs section, section three, is all about quantifying and assessing housing needs. And that is using published secondary sources of data, like the U.S. Census, the Decennial Census, and also the American Community Survey, special runs of data through public use microdata sample, or PUMs, State of California data, private data vendors. Your consultants and your staff have access to a real wide range of data resources to tell the story about what housing need is in Cupertino. And that's what this section is meant to do. It's meant to allow you to tell the story in a quantitative way of what your housing needs really are. It must include an analysis of certain special-needs categories. These aren't all of them, but these are some of the most important, that are typically examined in depth by local communities. Elderly populations, persons with disabilities, whether those disabilities are physical or developmental, female-headed households, homeless persons and families, and others. So those are some of the major sorts of categories of housing need that you'll want to examine in your housing needs section. What's new? So the housing needs assessment must address fair housing issues much more comprehensively because of adopted legislation around affirmatively furthering fair housing. And in addition to the, you know, typical presentation of fair housing enforcement data, which in past housing element rounds, I don't know if any of you were around for the past couple of cycles, really what we were required to do was to, you know, document fair housing complaints, and to say how many complaints have been received on the basis of ethnicity, of sexual orientation, of other protected categories, depending on what jurisdiction you're in. You will continue to have to do that to sort of fully document fair housing enforcement data, but also include much more extensive data, in addition to data mapping of integration and segregation patterns and trends, racially or ethnically concentrated areas of poverty, disparities in access to opportunity, that means economic opportunity, and disproportionate housing needs within the jurisdiction, including displacement risk. That's lower-income households that are at risk of being displaced as housing markets change. So these are all things that are new in the housing needs section. Many of them are already addressed in the data packet that we, that ABAG and TC have provided as a tool. Others will have to be developed. And it's worth me noting that right before this meeting, the State Housing and Community Development Department issued some additional guidance and resources related to affirmatively furthering fair housing with some additional mapping that I haven't had a chance to take a look at yet, but would be, you know, the type of mapping and additional data that you would want to build into your needs assessment. A lot of comments to local jurisdictions in Southern California around the needs section have related primarily to this exact issue of affirmatively furthering fair housing, and how comprehensively the needs analysis has considered issues around segregation and integration. And then how that compares in whatever jurisdiction is conducting the housing element to the larger regional context. So this is something that probably, going forward, you know, might be worthy of a specific in-depth council session, once you, or, you know, study session. There's a lot. There's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of new material that needs to be included in the housing needs section. Also, a lot of new resources that can be integrated. And it's something that certainly jurisdictions in Southern California that have received comments from HCD have had to pay very close attention to. The fourth section is an analysis of actual and potential governmental and non-governmental constraints. So those are constraints to housing development. And not just housing development, constraints to the ability of existing housing to meet the housing needs of the local community. Non-governmental constraints include things like the availability of financing, the price of land, hard construction costs, things that make it difficult for for-profit developers, for nonprofit developers, and for developers' partners, city governments, state housing finance agencies and others to make projects work. So many of these things are outside of the control, obviously, of local jurisdictions. But the constraints analysis nonetheless must fully consider all of these various constraints, non-governmental constraints. And then also assuming that their non-governmental constraints are found, address ways of proactively addressing those constraints through policies and programs and actions. In addition to non-governmental constraints, there are governmental constraints. And this is something where a lot of the comments from HCD have tended to concentrate in the recent housing element update letter, comment letters. So governmental constraints include things like land use controls. So planning entitlements, local processing and permitting procedures, building codes and enforcement, on and off-site, on and off-site improvement requirements, fees and exactions, and then any locally adopted ordinances that might affect the cost and supply of housing. I should point out here that in terms of governmental constraints, this is one area where the collaborative, the Santa Clara County Planning Collaborative, will be providing some additional materials. Actually, we'll try to provide as much additional support for each section of the housing element. But here under government constraints in particular, we anticipate conducting a review of processing times, fees, and other potential government constraints that, for all Santa Clara County jurisdictions, that you get a sense of what your peer cities are doing and you can benchmark yourself to those cities. In terms of, you know, what's new, and I already indicated this, a lot of attention from HCD has been focused on providing really detailed analyses of constraints in the housing element updates. So when looking at land use controls, it's not enough to just describe those controls, to just lay out what they are. Housing elements need to look at how the impact of these combined, individual and combined controls might affect the cost, supply, timing, and approval certainty of housing development. And then related to that, are there programs that can be included to address, remove, or mitigate the identified constraints? So it's not enough to simply document these or describe them in detail. They need to be analyzed in terms of what their real impact is on housing being provided during the housing element planning period and what you as a city can do proactively to address any identified constraints if there are constraints that are identified. Much of the work in the housing element, and I know that already seems like a lot of work, but building up to all of those, from all of those previous sections, much of the work goes into the Sites Inventory and Analysis Section. This is section five. And this is really where you, as a city, are asked to identify sites to meet your share of the regional housing need allocation, to meet housing needs across income categories, and to identify what specific sites at what anticipated densities might be suitable for development during the planning period. So the first part of this is you want to document your progress, building on your review and revise section, your progress on pending approved or permitted units by income group based on actual or anticipated sale prices or rents since the beginning of the projection period. You want to analyze the capacity of sites to accommodate, the identified sites to accommodate your RENA. And we'll get into RENA in greater depth in a minute, including an analysis of environmental and infrastructure constraints. And then you also want to identify sites with appropriate densities to accommodate RENA for lower income households. So one kind of rule of thumb that cities can use, this is something called default densities, are these kind of default densities at which it's presumed that affordable housing for very low and low-income households might be more feasible. And in Cupertino and in every other Santa Clara County jurisdiction with less than 100,000 people, that's 20 dwelling units to the acre. That means that if the site is bigger than a half an acre and it identifies, and it's zoned to allow 20 dwelling units to the acre, that it's probably suitable for accommodating low and very low income housing development during the planning period. And then finally, beyond identifying sites, there's lots of alternative ways to meet your regional housing needs allocation. The most important of which is the development of accessory dwelling units. And I know that there's been a fair number of accessory dwellings that have been approved in Cupertino in recent years. We definitely had Cupertinoans who participated in the statewide survey of homeowners that have built ADUs that Josh mentioned before. And so we'll have some information about what the real situation is for ADUs in Santa Clara County that can be used for this section of the Sites Inventory and Analysis. What's new? There's a lot that's new here. Obviously, addressing affirmatively furthering fair housing in the sites analysis, which in essence means that if you identify sites that are suitable for accommodating affordable housing, that they should be near transit. They should be in areas that are service-rich, that have access to high-quality schools, to economic or employment opportunities, to parks and recreational opportunities. That they should be good sites. And this isn't anything to do with Cupertino at all. But it's where this comes from in part is a tendency in some other places around the state to identify sites that are not in service-rich areas or in areas that really aren't suitable for housing and have environmental or infrastructure issues that make it very difficult for those sites to be successful. So when you're looking at what sites you're going to identify for affordable housing, thinking about how that advances this affirmatively furthering fair housing requirement. Non-vacant sites analysis, as I mentioned before, greater rigor and scrutiny applied to non-vacant sites that are being proposed to meet your regional housing needs allocation. And if non-vacant sites accommodate 50% or more of your lower income RENA, you need to demonstrate that the existing use is not an impediment to additional development. So just to put it really simply, if there's a aging commercial strip mall and the proposal is that housing might be feasible as a replacement for all or part of the site where that strip mall is, you need to demonstrate that it's economically feasible and that the existing use is not an impediment to additional development. So what's this RENA that we've been talking about? Well, the regional housing need allocation comes from a regional number that's provided by the State of California to the Bay Area region and then is then sub-allocated to individual cities. So we could have, you know, probably a full day workshop just on RENA. And in fact, Josh and I just did a couple-hour workshop on this last week. And it's something we'd be glad to do going forward if there's interest in Santa Clara County, and I think there will be. But in essence, it's a state requirement that each regional association of governments comes together and develops a methodology for allocating housing need across the region and that this methodology take into account certain prescribed statutory factors. And we'll talk about those in a minute. But you can see here, the proposed, and we're calling this at this point illustrative, regional housing needs allocation because it's not quite finalized. We think this is probably pretty close to what it's going to be. But this is the illustrative regional housing needs allocation. For Cupertino would be, at this point, 4,588 units that you would have to plan for, not build. It's an important distinction. Cities are asked to plan for, to proactively figure out ways to accommodate. But you're not a developer, so you don't have to build them. You just have to plan for them during the planning period. So, and this is at, you know, the various income levels that we talk about, which include very low-income households, those making less than 50% of the area median income, low-income households, modern-income households, and above-moderate-income households. This chart also shows how Cupertino compares to Santa Clara County, the Bay Area as a whole, and breaks that down numerically and also by percentage. So there's been some movement on this, for those of you who've been following this. And I think some of you who are participating in the study session this evening have been. The original proposed methodology that ABAG developed through the Housing Methodology Committee would have assigned RENA of 6,222 units to Cupertino. There was, you know, quite a bit of discussion, comment letters back and forth at the end of last year. And Cupertino, along with Palo Alto and a couple of other jurisdictions, saw their numbers come down pretty dramatically. Palo Alto's number went down from 10,058 to 6,086. Cupertino's number came down from a little over 6,000 to 4,588, which is a 26% decrease between the October 2020 version of the methodology and the final adopted methodology, which was as of January 2021. So we're going to have these charts ready to call up again when you're asking us questions in a minute. And I want to make sure to get to Josh, who's going to talk a little bit more about next steps in the process and also the process for appeals. Excuse me. One final thing on RENA. The statutory requirements that were taken into account by the Methodology Committee and factored into the methodology that they developed include increasing housing supply, mix of housing types, promoting infill development and socioeconomic equity, providing improved interregional jobs, housing relationships, balancing disproportionate household income distributions. So maybe moving more RENA to, more high-income RENA to low-income areas and vice versa. And then finally, affirmatively furthering fair housing. So Josh, I'm turning this over to you.
Paul, let me interrupt and Josh, pray with me for a moment. Thank you. I just wanted to interject. We did have a few people come in late. And I want you to know that we're going to have a total of six minutes for each of the 15 of us. That's going to be distributed between questions after this presentation as well as comments after the public comments. And so during our comment period, you know, feel free to ask questions and have a discussion as well. I'm going to put everyone on a timer. There are 15 of us. And six minutes each means about an hour and a half of time allocation. So, and I'll let you know every 30 seconds when that amount of time lasts. All right, thanks. Back to you, Josh.
Great, thank you. So I will continue just talking a little about where we're at in the process. So the region had a methodology committee that made a recommendation with several Santa Clara County representatives. The ABAG Board made some changes to that, but adopted a similar methodology to the methodology committee that was recently sent to the state to see if it complied with state guidelines, with the state rules. The state, just a couple, maybe a week or two ago, sent a letter that said that the proposed methodology does comply with the state law. So because that's the case, the ABAG Board will adopt the proposed methodology. They only make changes based on HCD comments. So that means the draft methodology will become the final methodology and then the allocations will become the draft allocations. And at that point, jurisdictions will have the opportunity to appeal or ask for changes in their allocations once you do. And that's expected to happen this summer. They haven't announced a date yet, nor have they announced. ABAG does the appeals. They haven't announced guidelines, a date yet, or anything yet much formal to go on, but this is what we know. Typically, there's three criteria for doing an appeals. The first is that the methodology did not follow the state rules. That's going to be a difficult argument to make because both ABAG and the state reviewed the methodology and believes it did follow the rules. But that's one of the avenues. Another one that you sometimes see cities appeal on is that the methodology was not implemented correctly. I think it's a little unclear from reading the statute if that's actually a valid criteria for appealing. But that often is one that's appealed on. And sometimes there is success on that one. And then the last one is a significant unforeseen event. I'll just say that COVID was not an unforeseen event. They were developing the methodology in the middle of the pandemic. So that's, that won't. I don't think anyone's expecting ABAG to have that be an option for appealing. Next slide. So looking at Southern California, they went through their appeals period already. And I think there's some interest there. This is, the state actually doesn't have a formal role in the appeals process, but this is a letter that they wrote, they were invited to write, right? They said, "Several jurisdictions cite the lack of land suitable for development as a basis for the appeal. However, even communities that view themselves as built-out must plan for housing through means such as rezoning commercial areas as mixed-use areas and upzoning non-vacant land." They actually, most of the things, most of the criteria that people would consider appealing on, they, the state said that they don't consider them valid appeals. If you read their letter, which we can distribute, they kind of go through, were built-out, COVID happened, a whole bunch of different other common ones. The state said they don't think that those is valid appeals criteria. Also, we know what happened in Southern California. Their counterpart to ABAG, there were 52 appeals and only two of them were partially upheld. One was just a straight-up mapping error. They had the jurisdiction boundaries wrong. So that one was upheld. And there was another one that was a fairly technical issue having to do with a dam that was partially upheld as well. The last cycle with ABAG had a slightly higher appeal success rate, but not much higher, around 10%. And again, it was, it tended to be ones where there was some error or some special circumstance that really wasn't broadly applicable. Okay, next slide.
So I think at this point, what we'd like to do is to stop sharing the screen and open it up to questions and discussion. And of course, we can refer to any of these slides that people have questions about. Thank you.
Okay, great. So let me just reiterate. And I do see that Commissioner Scharf has his hand raised. So we'll go by the hand-raising mechanism of Zoom for questions. Again, you have a total of six minutes between these questions and our period after public comment. So we'll start with Commissioner Scharf.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Great. So I looked at our percentages regarding VLI, low-income and moderate, at around 26%, 15%, and 16.5%. So I'm wondering, we currently in our city have an affordable housing requirement of 15% for rental and 20% for ownership. So would there be any objection by the state if we were to pass an ordinance that raises our requirements for new projects to those levels of 26, 15, and 16.5%? So we could meet our RENA? And the concern is, we already have developers complaining that even 15% and 20% is making projects financially infeasible. And if we raised it to what the RENA percentages are, I can see a lot more objections. So let me go through all my questions and then you can answer. The second one, how would we know what homeowners are going to put in an ADU and how much rent they would charge, so it would be at what level? Another question is, can we add more units to sites that we were in our current cycle? Like we have, say, the Hamptons, which they asked for 750, they got 600. What adding 100? Would adding a hundred fifty units to that project?
Three minutes.
Okay, and let's see. Oh, AB six eighty-six and the Fair Housing Act. Can we use that to prevent property owners from making housing units for low-income residents smaller, poorer quality, and non-inclusive? So those were my questions. Thank you.
Great. I'll tackle some of them. I might ask Barb to tackle the last one. The, the state has the ability to review inclusionary zoning ordinances if they have, I think it's over twenty percent affordable requirements, and ask for some feasibility analysis. And most likely, if you had an inclusionary ordinance that had a dramatically higher affordable requirement than twenty percent, it probably wouldn't be feasible to develop. So the state would have some grounds to disallow that. I think also, though, remember, as, as Paul said, your, your role is not to...
Three minutes.
The state recognizes that it's not possible, there's not the resources for jurisdictions to build all the affordable housing they need. So that's not the bar you're held to. The bar you're held to is you lay the groundwork and let developers do it if they can. ADU affordability is based on past trends. So that's the study we did of, of, of owners, the male survey. So you, you don't have to guess what they're doing. You can just go to past trends. Changing the zoning on projects. You can count projects in the pipeline in, in the approval process as long as they're not completed based before, six months before the housing element. And if you increase zoning, potentially, yes, you could get extra units for those in your RENA. And Barb, can you handle the last question? Do you remember the last question?
AB sixty-six and smaller, accommodating smaller, less high-quality sites or units, yeah.
Right. The city asked us to look at this issue also in terms of developers. And the city has a requirement in its inclusionary ordinance that the units proportionally have the same number of bedrooms as the, as the market rate units. And developers have been asking for concessions to have smaller units. So the city asked us to look at that in terms of whether there is a, whether having small, say, studios in one bedrooms discriminates against families with children. So that would be a disparate impact that's somewhat difficult to prove. So actually, we're looking at that quite seriously. In terms of being smaller and, smaller and poorer quality, I think the city can insist that they be, you know, very similar quality. But again, you know, you know, it depends what, what, what poor, how poor quality is defined.
One minute.
So anyway, we're, we're looking at those issues from a fair housing standpoint. I don't really have an answer right now. In terms of some of the other questions, though, I, I was going to reiterate what Josh said about having a high percentage, such a high percentage of affordable units would, as Josh said, make development infeasible. But there is an issue because I assume we're going to talk about no net loss next time. But you need to have really a surplus of sites because of sites designated for lower-income housing. Let's say that, I can't remember what the lower-income RENA was. Let's say it's about two thousand units. If you designate sites that can accommodate two thousand units, but then developers only have twenty percent affordable housing, you need to find another site to make up for the, for the units you've lost, if that makes sense. Yeah, I think, I think the staff's talked about no net loss before. So, so there, there is an issue with that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, our next hand is from Vice Mayor Chow. Vice Mayor Chow.
Hello. Hi. So I understand that you would say the cities only need to approve housing since we cannot build housing. However, I see that, as, as you, as we all know, Cupertino identified five housing element sites. All five housing element sites have been approved within, I think, the first three or four years of the eight-year cycle. And yet, most of them are not built. We have only one small site. So the HCD say one thing, but they do another. They only count the units produced. They actually want to count only production. And I see that they are trying to ask us to evaluate our approval process. But where or who are going to evaluate the production process? Or the restrictions on production? That actually will impact how much housing is actually built.
Five minutes. Would anyone like to answer Vice Mayor Chow's question?
Josh, do you want? I can take part of the question. There is, as part of the constraints, the, on the non-governmental constraints, actual and potential non-governmental constraints, and an analysis of things like land costs, hard construction costs, changing market trends, things in the development environment that are making it difficult for developers to produce housing and to make, and to make housing pencil. That's completely outside the control of the city. So that is a part of the housing element that, that will be included in this upcoming round in terms of a really thorough analysis of the non-governmental constraints that you just, that you just described. Josh, did you want to add on to that?
Yeah, I'll just add that this is a very confusing part. There's kind of two questions. One is, can you get your housing element approved? And that's, that, that is really just based on demonstrating, demonstrating how many sites you have and is not based on building permits. So that's, it's a little more complicated, but, but that's basically true. That getting your housing element approved is based on showing that you have sites available. Now, SB thirty-five, every year, after your housing element is approved, there's a second question of are you producing enough housing? And that's where the consequences come that I think you're referring to. If you don't build enough housing, then, then you'll be on the list where it's easier for developers to build, build projects. So that's, that's true. It's, it's, it's a little complicated because it depends where you are. If you're getting your housing element approved, it's one set of rules. And if it's, if it's during the housing element cycle, it's a different set of rules.
Okay, great. So Vice Mayor Chow, you're at three oh nine. We have Councilmember, followed by Commissioner Tadichari, followed by Councilmember, Councilmember Wey.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. Okay, so I'm going to follow up with the housing elements approved by HCD. What is the, what are the criterias? And because we need to submit our housing elements by January twenty twenty-three, so how soon we need to have our elements submitted to the HCD in order for them to review and approve it?
So the criteria for being approved, actually, HCD just came out with a checklist of some things that they're looking for in the housing element. But there's not exactly criteria. There's the state law guidelines, and then there's just a lot of interpretation of that. I think there's been some frustration in the past about inconsistency of applying those. But I know the state, I know the state's worked actually really hard to try and be more consistent. I still hear some complaints, but fewer complaints about that. So it's, there's no short answer of what you need. I think all those sections that Paul talked about is, is what you, what you need with the sites inventory and maybe affirmatively furthering fair housing being the two really ones that you have to make sure, and there'll be a lot of scrutiny on. And then the timeline, HCD has said inconsistent things about what the, the deadline is in terms of if the deadline is their final review or if the deadline is their, the council adopting it. The, the, I think, I think a safe, a safe place to be is if you adopt your housing element in the fall, that, a fall of twenty twenty-two, that's a good place to be. There is a hundred twenty-day grace period. HCD has signaled, but not a hundred percent consistently, that they'll, that they'll use the date of adoption as the, as the date of being out of compliance. But I would say being, fall twenty twenty-two is a good target deadline. And that means there's two rounds of HCD review. There's a, when you have your draft element, you send it for them for comments, and then you adopt it, and then you send it for certification. So, yeah, so fall twenty twenty-two is having your final version, I think is a nice target.
Yeah, Josh, I, we've been representing several cities in San Diego County, you know, whose housing elements were due, but the due date was April fifteenth. In each case, HCD wanted the elements adopted by the due date. HCD doesn't need to complete its review by the, by the due date. So I believe the due date is January thirty-first or fifteenth of twenty twenty-three. So the housing element needs to be adopted by then. If the, the cities used to view that there was a hundred twenty-day grace period. If you don't adopt your housing element within a hundred twenty days after the element is due, then your housing element is due every four years rather than every eight years. But HCD doesn't seem to be viewing it as a grace period anymore. They show any jurisdictions that have, in the San Diego County, they show any jurisdictions that have not adopted their housing element by April fifteenth as being out of compliance. And also any cities that have not received final, where HCD has not approved their adopted housing element are also shown as out of compliance. So there's only one San Diego jurisdiction, the City of San Diego, that right now is shown as in compliance, although a fair number of cities have already adopted housing elements. The only other thing I would say is that, you know, HCD almost never, there's sixty days for HCD to approve, to review a draft element. And I've yet to see a housing element that they've found, found consistent on the first round. So if there's any way to build in two reviews, that would be good. But it's typically, the timing doesn't, doesn't allow that.
Okay, Councilmember Wey, you're at a minute and fifty-one seconds. Commissioner Tadichari, you're next.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
So I, I would like a kind of a very well-defined idea of what affordability is, both from HCD's point of view as well as from the point of view of the county and city. This has a lot of ramifications because, you know, the, we are in a situation of changing economics. There are approvals and there is a production. And typically, the production gets blocked because of many reasons. And then we, you know, the ability to meet the RENA numbers becomes a huge challenge. So in terms of approval, getting our, our RENA, you know, RENA thing in, in line and getting it kind of approved by HCD is one thing. But having physically seen what happens in the city in terms of production within a certain RENA cycle is another challenge. And I would like to understand, you know, there are a lot of upzoning-related laws which are being enacted. Can those laws also follow, can we, can the city have the power to, to force the RENA, what do you call, allocations in terms of percentages on any upzoning that they do for different kinds of lots? Thank you.
Okay, I, I'm not sure I caught the last question. Let me, let me, let me try to get as many as I can. So the, Paul, sorry, is it twenty or thirty the default density?
Twenty, yeah, twenty. And for, for all Santa Clara County jurisdictions that have less than a hundred thousand residents, it's twenty-nine units to the acre.
So for purposes of a housing element, all you have to do is show that it, that it's likely that nonprofit developers could build affordable housing on a site. And that's for simplicity to find in Cupertino at twenty units per acre. Now, what is affordable housing is a whole different question. In reality, it's, it's housing for teachers and for firemen and for baristas. That's, that's what affordable housing is. We actually put together a handout that we can, for, for this panel collaborative that we can distribute that goes over how the income limits are calculated and some examples and, and some pictures. So we're happy to distribute that as well. Can you repeat the last, if there's other parts of your questions that I, we didn't get to?
The last is that, you know, the, there are existing upzoning laws, and there are more upzoning laws coming down the pipe in terms of what's going on this year. So our, cities have the power to actually enforce some of the RENA-related requirements while upzoning a site.
Will you be able to enforce RENA requirements while upzoning a site? I think one thing that's, there's some areas that are clear, and there's some that aren't, aren't as clear. Generally, what your zoning is, is what you, what, what your zone, what's likely to build based on your zoning is what you can count for RENA. But then there's some areas, some cities, and some state pressure to think about duplexes and triplexes. And the guidelines for which of those to count are not, are not as, how to count those for your RENA are not as clear.
I think maybe part of the question, Josh, excuse me if I, if I'm misinterpreting this, is can you require that new development match the income distribution of RENA as you, when you upzone sites? And I think the answer, the short answer is only if it's economically feasible and it's not an impediment to, a constraint on, on new housing development, which generally, anything above fifteen or twenty percent is going to be.
The, the other thing that you can enforce is a minimum density so that you show that a certain number of units are to be built in the site. You can require that those sites be built at a minimum density so that you don't, so a developer doesn't decide to build at a much lower density. And so, you know, you're way below what you projected. But that, that you clearly can do.
Thank you. That's, that's a great point.
Okay, Commissioner Tadichari, you have a minute, forty-eight seconds left. Councilmember Wey is next, followed by Chair Cunningham, followed by Commissioner Madipadla. Councilmember Wey.
Okay, wow. So Josh and Paul, very, very good presentation. Forty-five eighty-eight for this fairly small community is pretty monumental. So we're going to have to get creative. So on to the questions. So looking to, to get the, the most impact would be like, we've got these old office buildings on Bubba Road, but you had said that the existing use cannot be an impediment. And so if we were to say, okay, we're going to rezone these areas with these old office, low-density office buildings, the fact that the owner might say, hey, I've got, you know, Apple renting these. They, they pay the rent. There's no way I'm going to tear them down. Is that considered an impediment? And I'll go on to the other questions before you, you answer them. So to me, that's the, the, the biggest area for improvement. And at that point then, how about other items like the ADUs? Now, so you, you get somebody who says, gee whiz, I'm going to build an ADU, and I'm either going to rent it to my in-laws or my parents or use it as a, an office. At some point in time, maybe I'll open it up to, to an ADU rental. How, how, you know, what's, how's that going to be fitting into the equation? Well, you know, five hundred ADUs, but they may not be available. Next on the list down would be something like, for seniors, our Westport project, you know, said, well, they're going to do these twenty memory care units.
Four minutes.
Do those, do those qualify as housing units? The, the elderly people that would be in those, that is their home, but yet it's nothing more than a room. And one more down on the list of possible options. Housing for the homeless, if we were to come up with a shelter and say, well, we're going to make the shelter that would accommodate up to twenty homeless people during crises or emergencies. Now, would those qualify? Although they probably would not be individual homes, it would be an area that's able to accommodate, say, twenty individuals of, of, you know, family versus singles. So, boy, how do all those things roll into this forty-five eighty-eight? Thank you.
Two minutes.
Josh, shall I, shall I start, and then you can continue on on ADUs?
Sure.
Yeah, so I can recall when I, I was the consultant to Cupertino for the fourth element, housing element, fourth cycle housing element update. And I remember when we were looking at sites way back then that there were many what we perceived as underutilized, relatively low-density office developments in Cupertino that were in fact being rented out to Apple or to contractors to Apple. And we speculated way back then in the, you know, that those sites, once the, the new headquarters was developed, might become available for, for housing. But to answer your question more directly, yeah, if, if the... But to answer your question more directly, yeah, if, if the owner of those office, say hypothetical office developments, was to say that they have a viable tenant and that they will have a viable tenant during, you know, the entire, the entirety of the planning period. And there's no other program or policy that the city has at its disposal to incentivize them using that site for some other use, then that would be considered an impediment. Now, the, the real, the real work here is going to be around analyzing the economics of what is likely to happen for underutilized commercial space in jurisdictions across California, because there is indeed a lot of underutilized retail and office space in almost every California jurisdiction. And so it will just require more work and more intensive due diligence to document what those impediments are. But that's, you're right, that if the landlord says, I have no interest in, in, you know, doing something else with this, then that would indeed be considered an impediment. Josh, do you want to talk about ADUs?
Yeah, so the state is, is relatively permissive. We know that some ADUs aren't used for, for housing, but the state allows all ADUs constructed to be, to count for your RENA. So that's kind of a bonus. It's just kind of a freebie, even though maybe 25% of those aren't in the long-term market. If it's rented to a family member, if it's rented, if it's available today and not, not tomorrow, it is not that precise. Like we, we're going to, we took a point in time survey about what affordability was. And then we'll work with the state that, to, to, that our, that our methodology was good. And then you can just use those safe harbor affordability assumptions. And if, if in reality someone doesn't do that or it's a little bit different, that's fine. You have a, you have something that's good enough for the housing element. Seniors' memory care units probably don't count as RENA. But if you look at the overall methodology for the region, they take out people living in congregate care and living in, in, in places like, like, like dorms. So, so they're kind of taken off the top. So that's why they don't count as RENA. It's a somewhat frustrating spot for, for cities that have a lot of those units.
That's time. Okay, so if you get to the end of your time, I think if someone else is willing to cede over. But given the first round of questions, I'm going to have a cutoff at six minutes in order to get to other people as well. So next we have Chair Cunningham, followed by Commissioner Madapatla, followed by Commissioner Saxina.
Good evening, Chair and all of, everyone here and especially to our residents who have attended this evening. I'm, have two questions, basically the two new laws. The first one I would address is the AB 1397, those non-vacant sites getting more scrutiny because they might not be usable. Parti, and then they're going to get more scrutiny, which gives you the impression that maybe you won't be allowed to use them. And yet later, then you were saying that yes, you could use housing sites that you currently already have. In our case, the Marina and the Hamptons, which have not built over many, many years. And you're saying we could put them back in. It just doesn't seem logical or it doesn't seem like those two ideas marry up with each other. So that's my first question. And then my second question on the affirmatively furthering fair housing. I know that the first sentence was about the previous one. All it was, was gathering data. And then you were talking about what the new affirmatively furthering fair housing is. It just seemed like it was more data gathering, but divided out into lots and lots and lots more splinters. So I was wondering where the difference comes in as far as making, making it more robust for people looking for homes that cities are in fact affirmatively furthering their, their housing. Thank you.
Great. So there's, there's two sets of rules, the non-vacant sites, there's lots of sets of rules, and the reusing sites. If it falls under both of those, then both those sets of criteria would, would apply. Why, why the state chose non, why one set of rules for non-vacant sites and a somewhat different set of rules for reusing sites? That's beyond us. Why the state chooses what it does, I'm not sure. But, but it's clear that like there are two different sets of rules. And for the non-vacant sites, it's, it's that increased scrutiny. And reusing sites, you have to rezone by right and meet some other really categorical rules. Those are just have to rezone. And if it's both, you would have to do both. Why? I don't know. Affirmatively furthering fair housing, definitely more data, data gathering, but things that might have happened in previous cycles, like putting a bunch of new housing, all your new RENA in a low-income neighborhood. Maybe it was by a transition, but it was still a low-income neighborhood, causing displacement and other problems in, in that neighborhood. Before wouldn't have had so much scrutiny, but things like that would have more scrutiny now. So that's, that's one type of difference. The other is outreach before, while there were rules for, for outreach. Now I think there's, if you don't, if you don't really do outreach to all the various segments of the community, that's, that would, that would potentially be another new area for AFFH.
Three minutes. Okay, so Chair Cunningham, you're right at three minutes. Our next hand is from Commissioner Madapatla.
Hey, good evening. Thanks for educating us. Could you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, yeah, and it's very informative and helpful. Thank, thank you for that. So it's, it's good to know that, you know, displacement risk is taken into consideration in the new HCD plan. I'm happy to see that. So because oftentimes, you know, with all this upzoning stuff, you know, the thing that gets overlooked is, you know, the people that gets displaced. So, you know, that that's being taken into consideration, especially, you know, on the low-income side. So I do have, you know, a few comments and some questions. I'll go through all of them and if we can answer them, you know, that'd be great. How these RHNA allocations arrived at, right? So for example, Cupertino is initially got, you know, 6,222 and then revised down to 4,588 with roughly, you know, 5,260 people per square mile density. Whereas, you know, last Gerdos is getting only 1,993 with just 2,600 people's density per square mile, right? So to me, you know, that doesn't make sense. It looks like, you know, Cupertino is getting punished for the good work that we are doing, accommodating more people. Why is it that way? Like it appears that way if you look at the numbers. That's question one. Second, Palo Alto is comparable in population size with almost half the density of Cupertino. What did Palo Alto get, you know, 39% reduction while Cupertino got only 26% reduction, you know, with much less land to build compared to Palo Alto, right? Palo Alto is 26 square miles and we are 11 square miles and we have twice the density. And we got, so, so, so that's my question number two. Third, third one is 40% of Cupertino allocation is low-income and very low-income. These need to be subsidized from 60% of the moderate and above moderate income build-outs. Is this percentage allocation same across all cities? If not, why? As my fellow commissioner identified, I don't see how we can get developers to build these subsidized housing with such high percentage, right? Most of them will bulk out or no back off, right? So the net effect of it will be the developers will not come forward to build anything, which means, you know, we will fail to meet the expectations. And it seems like a vicious cycle, right? So, so do we have any suggestions to get out of that vicious cycle, right? With a 40% low-income allocation, it's going to be impossible to meet that need to get developers to come forward. Thank you.
Great. How are the allocations arrived at? We'll talk more, we'll keep talking about this. But it, it starts with some projections about where growth is going to happen in the future. So that was part of Plan Bay Area. That's a big, whole, separate other conversation. After, after that, cities, jurisdictions with good access to jobs, either by transit or by auto, were, had, had numbers go higher and jurisdictions that had good areas of opportunity. So that means good schools, low crime, low environmental pollution, things like that. They had numbers go up. Cupertino, the, the transit, that pushed your number down a little bit. Access to jobs by auto pushed your number up. And areas that scored high in the, the, the opportunity areas, I don't remember. I would have to look if that pushed you high, higher or lower. But that's how it, it, it varies. So is, is every city the same about the percentage of very low and low? No, because there were different rules for your numbers, for your allocations based on the, what, the, the low income had a different formula than the high income. So, so conceivably a city could score, could get a lot of high-income units and not that many low-income units. They were similar methodologies, but they were different. So the first percentage, percentages might be somewhat different. And how do you get developers to build? I think that's a really good topic for the, for the next one, when we start talking a little more about, about strategies.
One second.
I think there's also, Josh, just to, to piggyback on that, I think that there's, you know, how do you, how do you provide incentives for for-profit developers to build? And for-profit developers that would then ostensibly be subject to your inclusionary housing ordinance and set aside a certain number of units at different affordability levels. But then related to that, but separate, is how do you work with nonprofit developers who can use sources of federal and state and local financing? They can leverage those sources to deeply subsidize affordable housing to really produce a lot of units at more deeply affordable levels. So those are, those are two different things that you, that you can, you, you can work through in your, in your strategies as you're talking about ways to proactively, you know, you know, really meet this, this RENA need. And Josh, he had a question about the, the densities. Did we, did we get, did we answer that?
Sorry, what was I, what was the question? Do you want to answer it because there's just 30 seconds left?
I'm sorry, I don't know. It was about like.
Let me stop the time and then if we, if someone remembers next, we can re, re-ask the question.
It's, it's, it's basically just what Josh said. It's, it's that there, the formula, which we can talk about more in a more in-depth RENA session, takes into account all these different factors and doesn't necessarily take into account the, the beginning, you know, built-out density of each jurisdiction, whether it's Palo Alto or Los Altos or Cupertino.
Okay, great. So we have Commissioner Kandakota next, followed by Commissioner Saxina.
Hey, thanks for educating us. It's very informative. I have a question or clarification on this one, AB 1397. What is right by right, must permit by right?
Good question. It means that there's no discretionary review, so the rules are really straightforward. So you don't say things like, don't impact, don't unduly impact the neighbors. You just say exactly what that means. You don't say, don't create too many shadows. You say, limit shadows to 10%, like a very numeric standard that refers to a printed objective criteria that everyone can look at or verify.
Thank you.
Barb, did you want to comment on what, on the meaning of by right in light of some of your experience?
Well, there's. Well, first of all, not only with by right projects, but with any housing development, a city can only apply now, presum, assuming that the project doesn't require any a rezoning or a general plan amendment or any other kind of legislative approval, a city can only apply objective standards of the type that Josh was describing. With, what by right means in particular is that if there's 20% affordable housing and HCD has interpreted that mean 20% of the base density, not with any density bonus, is affordable to lower-income households and the project does not require a subdivision, then it is exempt from any kind of review under the California Environmental Equality Act. And the only review that the city can apply to it is design review. That's what the statute says. There's some disagreement with HCD about what kind of design review can be applied. In the technical guide that HCD put out, they point out that you can have hearings to consider design review, but the standards have to be objective. And the planning commissioner, whatever body looks at it, would not look at the use. HCD has asserted to one of my clients that they can't have public hearings, but that's inconsistent with their technical guidebook. But, but the real significance of by right is that, again, if there's no subdivision and 20% affordable, then there's no review under the California Environmental Quality Act. So it's a much more streamlined type of review. No use permit, nothing, just only, only design review can be applied. And that has to be applied with objective standards.
Okay, great. Commissioner Kandakota, you're at 308. I don't see any new hands raised at this point. So I'll just go through and ask if Councilmember Moore or Chair Wang or Commissioner Capile, Commissioner Saxina or Commissioner Boz would like to ask any questions at this point. I see Commissioner Saxina.
Yeah, first of all, thank you to the staff for the excellent presentation. I had a few questions. First of all, and I'll sort of go through them first and you can probably answer them in sequence. First of all, does the definition of transit connection assume actual throughput or just the fact that a road is there? So like, I mean, do they think that Highway 85 can support more traffic, given the way it is right now? Or do they, or is that factor or not? That was question one. Okay. Question two was around, around COVID. So right now, you know, all my friends and family in India are in deep pain because I don't know of any family which has not lost somebody right now. It's, it's an ultimate disaster. And I think all estimates of how it goes and what it does have been thrown out of the, literally thrown out of the box. People have been sitting at home for, for weeks, have not ventured out, are down with COVID. And then there is new research suggesting that it is not aerosol-borne, but airborne. So it can travel large distances and still hurt people. So I heard a statement about COVID saying that that should not be a factor. And like especially going, seeing the pain I'm seeing right now, I'm like bewildered or shocked or like I don't even know the right adjective for it. Could you elaborate more on that and what that means?
Good, thanks. So the two questions, the, the way, the, the factors for increasing or decreasing methodology for, there were two factors related to transportation. One was the, the percentage of the jurisdiction that's near, near jobs. And that's based on a 30-minute auto commute. So that does actually take into account the, the traffic and, and how the roads actually function. And the transit commute is a 45-minute transit commute based on morning peak service. I, all of them actually go into more detail, like the auto one assumes you're not in carpool lanes. There's more and more details. But, so those are the two. And I think you break, you bring up a really important point about COVID. And thanks for raising it because it is a really serious issue. What I, what I meant to say, and maybe I didn't say it sensitively, is for appeals, appeals to the RENA numbers, it's not likely, the, the state doesn't believe that COVID is a valid reason for appealing because COVID was already happening when they assigned RENA numbers. But the COVID actually was responses to COVID and, and were taken into account when they assigned the RENA numbers. Plan Bay Area made different assumptions about job growth and housing growth based on what they thought would be future patterns based on the new world. I mean, obviously post-COVID or, or post this phase of COVID. So that was taken into account for Plan Bay Area and Plan Bay Area does affect RENA. So, so it, it was, it was considered. I was, I, I meant simply about the appeals process when I, when I said it wasn't a, a criteria.
Okay, great. Commissioner Saxina, you have two minutes and 43 seconds remaining. And now we have Chair Wang, followed by Commissioner Boz, followed by Vice Chair Parrish. Chair Wang.
Yeah, just some quick questions. Did the accounting for the number of total population residents also include the 500,000 people that left over the last two years? We're about to lose a congressional seat over this, so.
Chair, do you want to, Commissioner, do you want to ask all your questions and then we'll answer all of them?
Yeah, let me do that. I think the second question is, we're in this weird situation where, you know, we can identify where affordable housing is. But if those sites aren't being built, is there any enforcement mechanisms that cities can do to make sure that housing is built and affordable housing is built? And then the last one is really is when land is designated to accommodate the RENA numbers, does a city have to be required to build or subsidize the affordable housing? So I'll leave those three for you. Thank you.
Great, good questions. Did, did, did recent trends in, in population get, get considered? Yes. Yes, the the state uses the Department of, I think, Commerce projections about where population is going, and that's based on a whole bunch of things, including driver's license changes and other things like that that they have access to. So they do they do take into account recent trends and what what the direction of the trends are. So yes, I mean, at least they say they do. I'm not a modeler, but they say they take those into account. Does a city have to build or subsidize, sorry, the enforcement to ensure housing and affordability is built? So that's a great discussion question for when we talk about policies and programs. I think there are some good policies and programs if Cupertino is interested in thinking about more things to do to to encourage or to make it more likely that housing is built. I think I think that's a really productive way to find things that work for for the city and but also help meet the goal. So I think that's a great that's a great conversation at future sessions. And does the city have to build or subsidize the affordable units? In order to get the 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 housing element certified, no. You have to just show that you're removing impediments, that you have the land available, things like that. But then there is the SB 35, I think Cupertino knows this better than any jurisdiction, the potential consequences if you're not building those units. It makes it easier for a developer to build build new, well, a developer to build so that it's you kind of it's it's hard, you have to keep in your mind, like, here's what you need to get certified. That doesn't really have to do with so much, do we have to build? Here's what happens, do those extra rules kick in? And that does that does matter whether or not you're building this based on.
Are there any differences in terms of how you treat whether an SB 35 project is built or a regular project? Do there does that change in terms of the timeline or certification?
Yeah, there's a whole set of rules with SB 35 that that come into play, not not when so much when you're approving the housing element, but when you're when that proposal comes in, there's a whole there's a whole set of rules that that kick in.
3 minutes.
Thank you.
Okay, great. So we have Commissioner Bose next.
Hello. Hello, everyone. I just had a couple of comments and then maybe a question. Maybe it's I'm trying to look at it from a higher level, from a different perspective. One of the things that Mayor Scharf had done was written a letter to Governor Newsom explaining the situation that the city of Cupertino was in and also explaining about the COVID situation. He did that last year. And that was one thought. The other thought was what what another commissioner had brought up was that why is it that we are almost quote unquote being penalized? We have higher density of population. However, we are expected to come up with larger RENA numbers compared to cities like Los Altos, maybe Palo Alto, that have more land and have less density of population. The third question that I had was, what happens if we are not able to meet our RENA numbers, which seems to be more than likely that that's how it's going to play out? What happens to what what are the consequences? And I'll take my comments offline.
Great, thank you. I think that I think the first one was more more comment, so I don't have anything to add to that. Why are we being penalized because of a low density, because of our higher density compared to our to the neighbors? I mean, I think the answer is is just that's how Plan Bay Area Plan Bay Area looks at future where future growth might occur. And to some degree, that's based on existing population, and some degree, it's based on where there are sites that might redevelop as housing. So cities with failing malls, failing strip malls, failing office buildings, large open spaces that that are sorry, open spaces zone for housing or appropriate for housing, not parks, those tended to get higher numbers. And areas areas that didn't have good opportunity sites tended not to get higher numbers. That's the methodology that the AVAG board decided on. And what happens if we don't meet read meet our RENA numbers? I mean, I think the 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 biggest consequence is, I'll say that that over time, there's been a trend of increasing consequences. The state recently approved money for the Attorney General's Office and the Department of Housing and Community Development to be more vigilant in 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 pursuing cities that didn't meet their didn't get a certified housing element. So if you don't have a certified housing element, you you risk not being eligible for for certain funding sources. But more importantly, you risk being sued either by a not a group, a housing advocate group or the state. And if you're sued and you're found that you don't you haven't you haven't met your requirements, then you could, there's an increasing series of increasingly worse consequences up to paying the the lawyer's fees and fines, penalties, or even losing land use control. Some judges have taken away approval authority from local governments until they get a certified housing element.
We're at 2:30 for Commissioner Bose, and we have Commissioner Parish next.
Sorry about that. I'd taken down my hand because Commissioner Wang had touched on a couple of my questions, but I did have a couple more. Good evening. How detailed do we have to be in order to meet this? Like, do we need to contact the owners of the properties and find out where their plans are for each and every one we identify? Or is it just, this is a potential, this is a big, you know, unused, underutilized commercial building? How how detailed does it have to be? And yes, I I the other one was just, how is it possible that with this element, we can have some type of addition and and authority to give them a timeframe to build? And I know you said you touch on it at the next meeting, but that that is definitely something I'm interested in.
So how detailed do we have to build? When the the new laws first came out, the state talked that you would have to be extremely detailed, letters from from owners, copies of leases that showed they were expiring. And everyone got really, really concerned and said, that's just not feasible. Since then, my perception is the state has been softening and backpedaling and saying, well, that only applied in certain circumstances because that jurisdiction because that jurisdiction was different. And now they're saying things like, well, you know, the scrutiny is not that much different than it was. It's just codifying past practices. They're softening their language a lot. The state is really interested in some some safe harbor assumptions, like if you look at the improved value, how much has been built versus the land value, maybe there's a ratio there. The state brought that up as one simple metric you could use potentially. I think it's a holistic analysis. A letter from the owner is a gold standard of like, yes, I want to redevelop, I plan to redevelop. If you you can't get that, no doubt in many cases. So you have to kind of get to say, you have to look at holistic analysis. Oh, well, three of the six storefronts are empty, they haven't invested any any property, any any money in the property in this many years. We've seen properties like this redevelop in other cases. So it's kind of a just like a common sense, as well as economic analysis of of what are the market trends and and what are the rents, things like that. Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, in the last cycle, the city actually asked developer, asked if people were interested in developing their properties, and it was almost a beauty contest of people who wanted of of property owners who wanted to have their sites listed. So that might be another tactic for the city. You might find, which actually makes it ironic that none of the projects have actually been built because they all promised the city that they would build.
And what can cities do to make it more likely that a developer would build? There's a number of strategies. We can talk more about them. Some cities have done things like charges fees for abandoned abandoned properties. Another thing is just making more profitable build, like if you can increase the certainty or the timeline or for whatever other reasons, to make it just the economics work better, then you're increasing the likelihood. In in order to requiring someone to build, I don't think that, I think that would be a difficult strategy that I don't think, I think that would be hard to pursue, like a hard requirement. I think it's probably incentive, stick, carrot and stick based.
Josh, I know we I know we have limited time, but one thing that we're hoping to add to the HES tool, the Housing Element Site Selection Tool, that AVAG is going to be providing as a resource to jurisdictions, actually, a beta version already has been provided, is additional additional analysis around improvement to land value ratios, which would help you to point towards sites that are potentially underutilized and could be could be included in your sites inventory for the house enrollment. So that's another area where we're hoping, in fact, we're working on it, that to provide additional resources to cities. Because it is a very high level of scrutiny if you're required to go to the property owner of each potentially underutilized, non vacant site.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Parish, right around a minute and 30 seconds. So at this point, I don't see any new hands up. I do see that Commissioner Scharf and Vice Mayor Chow have their hands up. Commissioner Scharf, your hand has been up for a while. Did you want to ask a quick follow-up question? You have.
No.
25 seconds.
Sorry, I never lowered it.
Okay, and Vice Mayor Chow noticed that that you did, in fact, affirmatively raise your hand again. Did you want to ask a follow-up question? Your your time is at 3:09.
So how much time I have?
You have 3 minutes and 9 seconds.
Okay. So I have one comment, one proposal, and one question. One comment, there were question about RENA allocation, why did we get the number we get? The city council had a study session on RENA, and the staff presented a more detailed criteria that they used to determine. One factor that penalized us the most is the diversity. We are considered not diverse enough. I remember we had like 76% extra allocation because of that. And can we check out that if you cannot find it, you can email city manager. Second, a proposal. So I find out that this is already almost May, but cities like Palo Alto or Los Altos actually had this session in January. And I looked at in Palo Alto, not only they had this session in January, they form the they had the council approval to form a council subcommittee on housing element plus a community working group of up to 13 members. And they had a list of different groups to include. And I don't know what's the final approval, but I see that that's there is definitely conversation.
I'm gonna make a, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Chow, I'm gonna stop your time right now. I'm just gonna make a point of order here. We're asking questions right now, clarifying of the presentation.
Okay.
Before we bring over to the public commentary. And so I'm providing the courtesy of a quick follow-up question, but if you have a comment and a proposal, you know, I would ask that you keep it until after the public comment is made.
Okay, then I'll ask my question. My question is, I was expecting to see the timeline of housing element. Because Palo Alto, they expect to finish the draft housing element in May or June next year, so that they they will submit to HCD at that time with the plan, the council approval in November. As pointed out by Barbara, we need to building time for maybe two rounds of review by HCD. So I wonder what's the timeline for ours. Thank you.
Yeah, Paul, do you want to share slide nine?
Sure, sure, I can do that, yeah. We can go back. And we can't really speak for all of the factors. So we can't speak to all of the factors that have gone into this, but I will say that there are some cities that have already hired housing element consultants and that have convened working groups, and most cities in the Bay Area have not. So Cupertino is not unique. But this is the basic timeline that staff developed and kind of where you are in the process and can be revised to build in two rounds of review, which I think, you know, could be a prudent way for you to go as a city. Does staff want to add anything to this?
Only 10 seconds left.
No, I I would like to just, you know, add that we are expecting to have our housing element, the draft housing element prepared by fall of 2022, so that we can have enough time for HCD to review it before the statute.
I'm gonna cut off, you, sorry. So Vice Mayor Chow, your your 6 minutes has elapsed. I'm gonna go on to Commissioner Amata Patla. Do you have any follow-up questions? And again, briefly, we haven't heard from the public yet. We do have at least one hand raised there.
Yeah, no, I'm just curious on Vice Mayor's comment, like, no, we are not diverse enough. I'm like, no, I was almost gonna laugh, like, you know, that must be a joke.
15 seconds of your time.
It's it's specifically economic diversity, and obviously Cupertino is an extremely diverse community ethnically. And as you can see from the people participating.
Okay, that's not, sorry, that's Commissioner Patla's time. Councilmember Moore, you haven't had an opportunity to ask questions yet, and your hand is raised.
Great, thank you, Mayor Paul. So looking at AB 1397, California Government Code 65583.2, Subdivision B5, uppercase B, parcels, and I might be jumping ahead here, but parcels included in the inventory must have sufficient water, sewer and dry utilities supply available and accessible to support housing development or be included in an existing general plan or other mandatory program or plan, et cetera. So my concern is that what's happening is that we are, for the county, being asked to put in 129,577 units and that we will max out our sewage treatment plants and that without SEQA, some kind of analysis, how are we going to make the determination that we have adequate water, sewer and dry utilities? Thank you.
HCD has has really indicated that they're not going to be super strict about that that rule. They they said that they want to see a plan. If you don't have adequate water or sewer, which reviewing the housing element, we would see if you do have adequate water or sewer. But if you don't, they would want to see a plan to 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 get there. But it doesn't have to be a final plan. So you wouldn't have had to complete the SEQA analysis to increase the water supply if 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 it's not existing now.
Any other questions? Okay, so you're right at 4:30, Councilmember Moore. And I see that Councilmember Way, as well as Commissioner Saxina, have their hands raised. Councilmember Way, you are at a minute and 51 seconds. So please proceed.
I have a quick question. It says analysis of actual potential governmental and non-governmental constraints. So if the analysis shows governmental constraints, does will HCD require the city to remove it, or what is the process?
Yeah, you should have a program or a policy to address constraint governmental or non-governmental constraints. Yes, but that section gets less scrutiny than the sites inventory, but yet that you would be expected to have a policy to address it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're right around 1:25, Councilmember Way. And Commissioner Saxina, you have 2 minutes and 43 seconds.
Do I go next?
If you want to ask a follow-up question, and again, we're gonna go to the members of the public who have comments before we come back to finish any deliberation or discussion or follow-up questions.
Yeah, I had one follow-up question on the definition of equitable. Like, just stepping back, you know, when I look at different neighborhoods, some neighborhoods are more expensive, some are less expensive, and all the supporting services, like, you know, the kind of restaurants you have, the kind of shops you have, they sort of adjust to the economic level of of that community so that they can have a fulfilling experience and still fulfill the needs. Like, you won't have a very expensive restaurant in a community which is not very wealthy versus the other way around. So when we say equitable, is it just about making sure that we have housing which can support income levels? Or is it also about the the other things that people need to 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 be able to live a fulfilling life?
The the it would be about, I mean, I think there's also an environmental justice element that's required for some cities and not, and that's another way of looking at some of those issues. The The, let's see, it, the housing element is mostly concerned with, with access to housing. Other elements of the general plan are more concerned with access for, we're dealing with transportation or commercial or, or, or other areas. So the, when we're talking about equitable development, I think we're looking at really the, making sure that the low income, I mean, the, 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 the direction is to make sure low income, low income, and again, by low income, we mean teachers and, and workforce housing is spread throughout and sets access to good schools and other things like that.
One minute. Okay, um, so we are, I'm gonna go on to our public comment. And so to the members of the public, uh, what I will say is that if your hand is not raised by the time the first speaker concludes speaking, you will not be called on. On the converse side of that, if your hand is raised by the time the first speaker concludes speaking, then, then you will be called on. So far, we have one hand raised, and that is from Jennifer Griffin. And we will be providing three minutes, as usual, for public comment. Welcome, Jennifer.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Darcy. Uh, thank you for doing such a good job leading this discussion. Uh, thank you to staff and consultants and the attorneys. This is not a fun, happy subject. I have been going, I think this is the third housing element cycle since two thousand and three, and some of our staff have crawled through this with us. It is not a fun thing, but I can tell you, this, this new housing element is not the same as twenty fifteen. This has loaded dice. The, we have to contend with these housing bills from Senator Weiner, Nancy Skinner, Tony Atkins, and the other crew. And we have these by right ministerial, um, these are new things. They were not there before. These are things that frustrate the minds of people who live in cities and in, uh, and in neighborhoods. Our rights are being assaulted, our local control is being taken away. Myself, as an adult, this has led me to question the future of democracy in my state. It is not the staff's fault or the consultants or workshop people. Because this housing element is different, things that have happened have put doubt and have cast doubt on the institutions of Rena, ABA, HCD, and MPC. I will say again, I have zero, they, these institutions have zero credibility because of their behavior, some of them associated with Plan Bay Area twenty fifty, and also with the shenanigans going on over the Rena numbers. It is a loaded dice. And I, I do think that all four of these entities need to be investigated thoroughly. We have a lot of covert issues that are going on in the state. My local control rights are being put under fire. My ability to vote and exercise my local control and my rights, everything that I have been brought up as a sixth-generation Californian to understand in my state is under assault. And we, we, the people in this state have not been asked for our input, and we're asking for it now. And I, I have all due respect to everyone involved in this. It is going to be a difficult fight, but I, I am beginning to question the credibility of a lot of institutions in this state if we continue down this road. And believe me, when they come to cut our trees down, when they're splitting our lots, Berkeley may not maintain themselves to their trees, but we sure in Cupertino and Los Alamos will be. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. And there are four more hands raised. They are Lisa Warren, Peggy Griffin, Sean Hughes, and Kelsey Baines. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. Um, so thank you very much for doing this, and I look forward to the next round. I, I have to admit, I was working and could not attend on time tonight, so I missed most of the presentation. In the meantime, I will go back and watch that. I think there have been excellent questions asked. And, and if Jennifer wouldn't mind me correcting her, I don't think she's beginning to doubt what's going on. It's been a dull building for a very long time, and that's the same feeling I have, and I know many others do as well. So that's actually all I can say right now, because I'm not equipped to ask questions any better than I've already heard being asked. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Our next speaker is Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening. I would like to thank Paul and Josh of Barred Driscoll Community Planning for their presentations and their answers. I would really like to thank the city council and staff for scheduling a joint session. I think this is refreshing, and I would like to see more of them. The number of questions, the interaction is wonderful. Thank you. I would also like, and also, I appreciate you inviting Barbara Cantz. I, I find her awesome, is the only word I can think of. She has the information at her fingertips, and she is strong enough to stand up to anything that is thrown her way. I would like to encourage you to strengthen our objective standards and look at every single new ordinance that we have to make sure the objective standards are there. I'd like you to look into incentives to see what the city could do to encourage affordable housing, and I would like you, if possible, to prevent the density bonus requirements from waivers and incentives. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Our next speaker is Sean Hughes. Welcome, Sean.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for the time and, and, and it's a public comment. And, uh, also thank you to the consultants, the, the information here is why, really helpful, I think, too, for someone who's only ever witnessed this through, through my parents who grew up in Cupertino and, and myself, obviously, but hey, um, watching this process go on before, it's, it's, uh, it's good to see this level of information being provided to the public and to our policymakers. I would just, uh, not a very substantive comment, but I think this is just a framing comment. I mean, I'm, I'm resident of the city, too, and I would like to say, I mean, frankly, this is my opinion, but I think that this exercise can and should be fun. I mean, this is truly about making a more sustainable and better community. And ultimately, it's a little disappointing, and I know I voiced this in one of the previous times I've commented as well, but I'll reiterate it again, but it seems a little disappointing that the framing here, I hear a lot of words about penalized, punished, needing to get creative around solutions to get around these requirements. Frankly, I mean, to paraphrase some, you know, colleagues in mind, I mean, housing is where people live. It's not a punishment. It's about creating a more inclusive society, a better society. I think, uh, it, it's just, it's just a little disappointing to hear that kind of framing. And ultimately, I think it benefits everyone, uh, at a community level, at a local level, at a county level, and at a governance perspective, you know? We come at this with a slightly more positive framing and also like where we're trying to go to as a society. I mean, it's gonna help the planning process all around. And, and I think it affects how we work with other levels of government, it affects how we, you know, work with the state, how to work with the state agencies, better understand their requirements and their perspectives. It's not to say that that's not being considered now. I'm sure it is. But frankly, it, it just feels a little disappointing to hear that, that kind of perspective. And also, I think, I, you may also be aware, but I think HCD has also just published their AFF standards today, so I think there's more information around ABs. I think it's, I might get the number wrong, six eight six, um, and those requirements. So I think that's available now for, um... That was all I had, sorry.
Okay, I think so.
Thank you, sorry.
No, it's fine. And our next and final speaker is Kelsey Baines. Welcome, Kelsey. Uh, Kelsey, unfortunately, we're not able to, to hear you if you are speaking. I think, um, some of the times are technological issues.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, okay.
Great. Um, hi, uh, good evening, councilmembers, commissioners. Uh, my name is Kelsey Baines. I am the regional director, uh, for the Peninsula and Silicon Valley for YIMBY Action. We are a pro-housing advocacy organization. And I also serve on the unhoused task force for Santa Clara County, although I am not here as a representative of that task force. Just to kind of preface my comments and frame them as, um, a conversation about the people who are the most impacted by our current housing emergency. We have many neighbors who, right now, are living in cars. They're living in overcrowded conditions. They are living with rent debt, uh, and they are living on the streets in tents and, um, with no, no shelter at all. And for those people, this is an emergency. And we really need every city and town on board to participate in generating the solutions, because there is a solution to homelessness, and it's housing. Uh, we know that housing works. Housing is a fundamental human need, and, um, it's, it's something that we can do if, uh, we say yes to planning for housing and getting on board with solving the problem. Because as another speaker already mentioned, housing is not a punishment, it's just a fundamental need, and adding more homes for a variety of people of various incomes, various ability levels, those are good things that will enrich your community, not harm it. So the final point that I want to make is just about this concept of affirmatively furthering fair housing. Um, and one of the commenters or one of the commissioners suggested that Cupertino is a very diverse place, uh, which I think in some ways is very true. Um, it's, it's a city that does not have a huge white population. There are a variety of people of various races. But I think it's important to acknowledge that there are not a lot of black residents in Cupertino. There are not a lot of Latinx, uh, residents in Cupertino. And if we're not including those folks, um, we need to think about what that means in terms of differences in health outcomes, in terms of differences in opportunities with schools. If we really want an integrated society, we need integrated housing. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Kelsey. We'll bring it back to our commissioners and council at this point. So, um, I have a, a list of times remaining, um, and so what I'll do, if, if people want to make, uh, any follow-up questions at this point or discussion points or comments, please feel free to raise your hand. I, I see Commissioner Saxina has his hand raised. I, I will go in generally, uh, to the extent that I can, in order of people that have the most amount of time left. And so Commissioner Capil, uh, you haven't spoken yet, and so we'll call on you first.
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Yes. Um, my question was for the, uh, the safety element of the housing. I know we don't have a lot of vegetation around Cupertino, like, maybe San Juan or a county like, uh, so there is no, so much risk associated with the wildfire and things like that. So I'm, I'm sure there is a safety element associated with the collection of a housing element out there. So, uh, that is something I'd like to understand a little bit more. And second thing is, uh, in the, uh, the Rena allocation, uh, when we say low income, moderate income, uh, very low income across the counties, what is the criteria? I mean, the low-income criteria in Cupertino can't be, may not be same as what you have in Santa Clara County or maybe in some other counties out there. So that is something, uh, probably, uh, need to be, uh, to be understood a little bit better in terms of how many units we allocate. That's all.
Josh, do you want me to start by talking about the safety element a bit?
Sure.
So this was in the staff report that we prepared in preparation for tonight, but we did not include it in the presentation. It is a new requirement that the safety element be updated simultaneously with your housing element update and then take into account things, as running Commissioner Capil has pointed out, like wildfire risk, um, susceptibility to climate change, sea level rise, for example, uh, and seismic risks. So what you want to take into account is sort of a comprehensive holistic view around all safety issues related to housing in your community, whether those are environmental or man-made safety issues. Josh, do you want to take the, the second one?
Uh, definition of low-income housing, sure, I think the easiest is if we just, if we send our, the, the handout that we put together, but it's a little complicated. You have to start by saying, um, when we say low-income person, what do we mean? When we say very-low-income person, what do we mean? So low-income person is someone who makes eighty percent of the area median income. The median means half the people make more and half make less. So you take eighty percent of that, adjusted for household size, and then you ask, how much can that person spend on housing? The default rule, the rule of thumb, is they can spend thirty percent of their income on housing. So you first figure out what the salary of that person is, um, and then you take thirty percent of that, that's what they can spend on housing. A little simpler for rent, but you can do it for ownership, too. Maybe realistically, if you look at low-income housing, that comes out to working professionals in the area, because you're starting with such high median, area median income. So, uh, a low-income person could easily be an architect or something like that. Very-low-income person could be a starting teacher, um, or extreme-low-income person could be a, a barista or a, a retail worker or a senior that become fixed income.
My question was mainly about the, across the counties. I understand that the, that the land cost is not uniform. So when you say low, very-low income, you, you have a certain percentage of annual grass income, but, uh, when you go from, let's say, Cupertino to Santa Clara, what's our other counties, uh, you, you are also looking at a different land cost and, uh, different, uh, 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 cost of living. So, uh, so how do you adjust to that?
You, I think you just recognized the system is imperfect, because the, the, those, those figures are, they're set based on the area median income in the county. And it might, your, you, I think your comment is right, that in, in, in South County, maybe they, that would be, that person would be able, a little more able to afford housing versus some of the more expensive areas. Yeah, there would be less, but it is what it is.
We have, and we'll, we'll send out the, the two-page, um, more than two-page Affordable Housing one-on-one document that shows household income by household size and compares that with occupations. As Josh said, you know, this is data that's collected at the county and then at the state level. You have the option, you know, as a city, when you're updating your housing element, to provide alternative data on economic trends and, and demographic characteristics. If that means doing your own survey or your own data collection to supplement what the existing data is from the federal, state, uh, and regional sources, then that's an option that you have. It's more time and labor intensive, but if you really believe that your economic and demographic situation is significantly different, then it's within your, you know, it's within your rights to try to document that.
Yep, thirty seconds. All right, uh, going by time remaining, um, Councilmember Moore, you have, you have the most time here, so four minutes and twenty-two seconds, and then I'll call on Chair Cunningham from, from the Housing Commission after you. Uh, Councilmember Moore.
Um, thank you. So I, I was just kind of honing in on the word environmental under the safety element, and I'm concerned about this. For instance, we, we have a gas station in the city which has a residential component to the land use designation, so I'm wondering if that's something, uh, that, that we can actually have as a, as a housing site? Can we choose contaminated sites or sites which we suspect to have contamination? Uh, can we choose contaminated sites or sites which we suspect to have contamination? Um, and then uh with, I, I, just to kind of follow on to some of the comments from the, from the attendees, uh, we do have quite a challenge here, so uh, you know, we're really going to need, we're really going to need to roll up our sleeves. Uh, we have a, a fairly infeasible percentage of VLI and LI uh that we need to um find locations for. And we have already experienced penalties from HCD, uh, which enabled a developer to manipulate a poorly-written hu- housing law, which was SB thirty-five, to actually worsen the housing shortage while using that to develop on a site which arguably has um some contamination. And I'm also concerned that it's, uh, appears to be irrelevant whether there is adequate infrastructure such as water, sewer, and dry utilities. I hope I'm not seeing that or understanding that correctly and that, that it does matter, but it, it sounds as though it doesn't. Um, so going back uh to the original question, can we choose sites which we suspect to have contamination on them? Thank you.
Great. Um, can you choose sites? Um, I, I think there's a question of whether or not the city wants to or what are the city's goals with where they put the housing, but that's aside. Would the state let you? The state would look to the gas station, either existing or even a closed gas station, as an existing use. And you would have to document that that gas station is not, is not likely to get in the way of new housing being built. Same for environmental contamination. You'd, you should show that that site could be remediated to residential levels. Sorry, I'll use, avoid jargon, that the soil can be removed, the site can be made clean, appropriate for residential levels um in order to use that site in the, in the housing element. And um, the water, the water issue is twofold. Could you use lack of access to water to argue for a lower RENA number? Well, no, I think, I mean, I, I think that's, I think that appeal would be unlikely to be successful. Um, but um, do you need to show that there's water or a plan for water? Yes, that, that's a requirement and you'll need a, you'll need to make sure there's uh either water or infrastructures or a plan to, to get that.
Uh, okay, so uh, what if the uh remediation, uh, perhaps you have a dry cleaner and it has PCE contamination and it's going to take fifteen, it, it could take twenty years to clean up. And that's well beyond the uh, the cycle that we have here. Uh, can we still select that site?
Um, I think it would be, it would be unlikely. There would, you would have to uncover, uh, uh, the, overcome that bar that it's unlikely to develop. And from what you described, it sounds like that site is unlikely to develop. So therefore, it's not a site that you would want to use in your, in your housing element.
Okay, uh, you're at one oh eight, Councilmember Moore. Next, we have uh Chair Cunningham, followed by uh Commissioner Parish.
How much time?
And uh, Chair Cunningham, you have uh three minutes left.
Okay. Um, I would like to start by saying that um the first responsibility of the Housing Commission is to assist with planning and policies for housing with a special focus on affordable housing. Having heard from the public tonight, and I've also heard from many other comments from the public over time, that housing for all incomes and abilities is needed. And in fact, it should be a joy for us to provide housing for all of our residents. Um, the general plan has of several chapters. Housing is one of those chapters. Another chapter is land use. They are written in separate chapters, and yet what is the policies in the general plan, excuse me, under land use, are integrally related to housing. And you cannot achieve the housing and the housing element without policies that support that in the general plan. Um, therefore, I am urging everyone here tonight to think not only about these housing goals as we talk about them, but the land use policies that will be needed to make these goals a reality. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you a famous quote. Do or do not, there is no try. That's Yoda from Star Wars in two thousand eighteen. Although Cupertino had a housing element for previous five years, which required one thousand sixty-four homes to be built, many hundreds of which would have been affordable, we have not yet built them. We have only built nineteen affordable units called the veranda near Main Street and three dozen granny flats known as ADUs or accessory dwelling units. You may have heard, and I have certainly heard, many reasons why that is so. There is a broad swath of reasons. There is some truth in each of those statements, but there are also ways for the city to plan to handle each of them. Lack of housing was a major problem when uh Governor Newsom came into office. Um, then COVID hit. Unemployment skyrocketed and the number of people suffering homelessness has grown. This is a regional problem for which we need to play our part. Tonight, we start this local planning process. We have three things we need to do: locations, locations, locations. Then we make the policies that we need to make those locations happen. And together, we can make it happen.
Thirty seconds.
Together, we can do as Yoda has asked us, as sort of he's directed us to do. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Chair Cunningham, and you have nineteen seconds. And uh, thank you for your uh use of your time as well. Uh, our next, uh, our next speaker is um Commissioner Parish. And Commissioner, or Vice Chair Parish, rather, you have a minute and thirty-two seconds.
Okay, they'll make it quick. Um, the, the decontamination that Commissioner Moore was talking about, the cleanup, does that fall on the, uh, on the responsibility of the city or the developer to do? And then my second is a comment. And this is something new I'm doing for everybody who says, let's do more affordable housing. It's a new campaign I'm starting, which is, I invite all of those that spoke of the public to reach out to their real estate investor friends or real estate owner friends and ask them, do they have an underutilized commercial property? Do they have a property that they'd like to donate for uh low-income housing? I believe that there is resources and if we network together, I just, I hear it a lot and I think everyone wants low-income housing. And I think we can all share the responsibility of finding that. So I encourage all the public to uh look for that and reach out. Is there someone not, not utilizing their building that could be um transformed into low-income?
Thirty seconds.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so Vice Chair Parish, you have approximately thirty seconds left, a little bit less. Uh, Vice Mayor Chow, your hand is up. Uh, unfortunately, you're out of time, and so we'll need to uh ask if anyone would cede their time over. Uh, but before we do that, Councilmember Way, you have your hand up. And so we'll go to Councilmember Way. Oh, you put your hand up. Um, same with Commissioner Madapatla, you, you have actually run out of time as well. Um, so Councilmember Way's hand is back up. Councilmember Way, you have a minute and twenty seconds of your time. And so uh, uh, this is what I'll do. Um, we'll call on people that have time left uh to give comments or ask for questions. And then uh, if there is a request by people without time left to uh still speak, I will be uh taking um requests to cede time over. And I'll let people know if they're willing to, um, if they're willing to cede uh some of their time over or all of it, how much time they have left. And then they can just indicate how much they'd like to cede over. Uh, so Councilmember Way, you're um the hand up that has time left, and so we'll call on you. You have a minute and twenty seconds.
All right, thank you, Mayor Paul. I would like to echo um Connie said and also Tessa. They've been very positive. We can do this together. And we might find people who together could, you know, donate lands for our low-income housing. And I'd like to remind everyone, this is a housing allocation for the next eight years that ends twenty twenty-three. This is twenty, twenty thirty-one. This is twenty twenty-one. It's a ten-year plan. It's an eight-year allocation, ten-year plan. So I'm not discouraged by the number we have because we are planning for the next ten years. As I told a lot of teenagers, if we as adults do not plan right now, ten years later, after they graduate from college, come back to work, we're still going to be standing still with no housing available. We need to plan it right now. Even plan it right now, we're not going to get any housing in the next five years. So let's get together and plan our housing allocation happily. And this is a chance we can really look at our city. Where can we plan our housing allocations? So I really like, want to echo a couple of the uh speakers that this is a happy occasion. This is something we can do together as a city. So I'm, I'm very um positive about it, so let's do it together. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Way, and that is effectively your time. I have, you have three seconds left. Um, so we do have Vice Mayor Chow and um Vice Chair Sharf, Planning Commission, with their hands up. Is there anyone else that would like to um make some final comments? I, I, I will note that, and I see um Commissioner Boz with her hand up and uh Councilmember Willie, and Councilmember Willie, just, just for uh your notice, you actually don't have time left either. Um, but um Chair Wang of the Planning Commission has his hand up as well. So um, I'll go ahead and call on uh Commissioner Boz and then Chair Wang. Uh, Commissioner Boz, you have two minutes and thirty, thirty-one seconds.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. Um, a comment I wanted to make is, I believe most of the people, most of the commissioners that have volunteered their time um towards their commissions, all believe, especially the Planning Commission, the Housing Commission, we all truly believe in providing housing for all the people of the, of the country and all the people that live in Cupertino. And we definitely do believe in being equal and more diverse as one of the people of the public came and uh commented. So I believe everyone is here to give their time to make this happen. It's just that we are having this joint session together so that we can understand how we can move forward in a more positive direction. And I can defer the rest of my time to the Vice Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, great. Um, so um Commissioner Boz, you have a minute and thirty-seven seconds. And so you would like to cede the entirety of your time, just to confirm to Vice Mayor Chow, is that right?
That's fine, yes, thank you.
Okay, uh, very good. So I see that uh Chair Wang of the Planning Commission has his hand up. So Chair Wang, you're next.
How much time do I have?
You have two minutes and fifty-seven seconds.
I'd like to cede two minutes to Vice Chair Sharf. And uh, if anyone else needs fifty seconds, I'm happy to give that to someone as well, or I'll make a closing comment.
Uh, I, I'm sorry, did you say you want to make a closing comment or you are?
I'll make one uh after um everyone else has spoken. So I'll, I'll leave it to uh, two minutes to Vice Chair Sharf.
Oh, okay, I see, I see. So you're reserving roughly fifty-six seconds for yourself.
Yes, please.
Okay, got it. All right, sorry, I misunderstood. Um, okay, our next hand raised with time left is Commissioner Tadichari. And you have a minute and forty-eight seconds left. Govind, we, you, you need to unmute yourself.
Uh, okay, so I hope you can hear me. Uh, good evening, and I really thank um uh the, the inputs as well as the presentation. And I think we, we are well-educated right now, and our goal is actually to provide affordable housing. The, the challenge seems to be that we have a kind of, uh, uh, we have a challenge here, but we have to perceive the, the, the overall idea of how affordability works. So there's a, uh, there are studies over the last hundred and twenty years about affordability and absoning. Uh, we need to bring that study into our discussion. That's one thing. The other is that there is a, uh, there is a document out from National, uh, NEHP.org. It basically says that, you know, even the median income, uh, median price of three hundred and forty-six uh thousand seven, seven hundred fifty, uh, seven hundred fifty-seven is um, is still unaffordable for seventy-five million households in United States. And that, a, a small shift of about a thousand dollars in home prices can uh result in hundred and fifty-three thousand nine hundred sixty-seven uh people not qualify for mortgage. So I, I want this, this kind of information to be folded into what we talk at the Santa Clara County level. And I wo, I would like to see the affordability paper that you have, uh, document, but I want that particular information to be tempered with what information we already have uh from both the economic studies as well as the National Association of Housing Board, uh, NEHP.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Govind, and uh you have roughly twelve seconds left, which um I think is essentially your time. And so uh, the hands that I have left are Vice Mayor Chow, uh, who has had time ceded to her, uh, from, from Commissioner Boz, uh, Commissioner Parish, Vice Chair Parish, rather, uh, a minute thirty-seven. Um, I have um Vice, uh, Vice Chair Sharf, uh, who has two minutes from uh Chair Wang. Uh, I do have a hand raised from Councilmember Moore, who has about a minute left. So what we'll do is, we'll go in that order. Uh, although I will say Councilmember Willie did raise uh his hand as well. So Councilmember Willie, I will go ahead and cede two of my minutes to you. Um, all right, Vice Mayor Chow, and we'll just, you know, we'll make you an even minute and um, whatever, um, whatever Vice Chair Parish didn't cede to you, I'll go ahead. Oh, I, I apologize. Was that Commissioner Boz that ceded time? It was, right? Okay, great. Yeah, I noticed that, that, yeah, okay. So Commissioner Boz, this is time, uh, we'll go to Vice Mayor Chow, and we'll just, we'll give you an even two minutes.
Thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor Chow.
So as we know, as much as we would like Cupertino to stand alone and be accountable, we are not. And our residents, a lot of them come from um the peninsula. Palo Alto has three types of jobs of the amount of house that residents stay have. And as a result, Menlo Park in those cities, their, their workers overflow to reside in Cupertino. As a result, that drives up Cupertino housing crisis. So I would like in our housing element to address this uh non-governmental restriction that affect our housing crisis as more projects that build more jobs rather than housing. Second, um, our general plan in up to twenty twenty-four was planning for twenty-five years for forty, forty-four hundred twenty-one units. And now we are looking at forty-six hundred units in eight years, twenty-five percent growth. I assume that the year I will address um all the utilities that we, we are concerned about. Um, so please address that. And yeah, and then I'd, I'd like to, the council to consider possibly forming an open working group or maybe a continuation of this joint study group, I say working group. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. We'll go on to Vice Chair Sharf of the Planning Commission. And that was Chair Wang of Planning that was ceding in two minutes. So welcome, Vice Chair Sharf.
Thank you. Um, I would also like to thank Tessa for her suggestion regarding asking developers about land to donate. It's a very nice thought, but I'd like to remind everyone that for the veranda, the only uh RENA project that actually has been built, we had to pay market price for that land. The owner um did not donate it or give us any kind of a break. But I also like to encourage people to write their legislators and governor and urge them to bring back some sort of funding for the building of affordable housing. We know that when redevelopment ended by Governor, former Governor Brown, that cut off the funding for affordable housing. And that resulted in a huge decline in the number of affordable units being built. Um, you know, the state is not building affordable housing. And the reason we're not getting it is uh, it's not because cities aren't approving projects. It's that property owners don't build the market-rate projects that have the fifteen percent uh affordable units that are city mandates for rentals. And um, they have all sorts of reasons. They com, they claim it's not financially feasible, especially given the current market rate conditions um for market-rate houses.
Reasons.
We all know, you know, the rents have plunged in San Jose area and San Francisco area. So market-rate projects are unlikely to be built uh in the foreseeable future. Um, and as we know, we can't set our affordable housing percentages to the levels required to meet our RENA affordable units. So that money has to come from somewhere to build um affordable housing. And I would encourage everyone again to write to their legislators uh and encourage funding from the state. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Vice Chair Sharf. And uh Chair Wang, you have about a minute left. Um, so we'll go next to Councilmember, well, so, so Councilmember Moore does actually have time left. You have a minute and eight seconds. Um, so I'll, we'll go to you before we go to Councilmember Willie. The Councilmember Moore, did you, did you want to make it an even two minutes? Uh, I could cede some time over to you as well.
I don't think I need that much time.
Okay.
Okay, uh, so I, I kind of want to echo off of what uh Mayor um Commissioner Sharf was saying. And we have three thousand four hundred fifty-seven allocated uh units um that are entitled out of the one thousand sixty-four that we were required. And uh, And we, I'm looking at the, the law, A B thirteen ninety-seven. It's interesting that residentially zoned sites include the airspace above sites owned or leased by the city. So we do have some flexibility for some truly creative housing. I would like this to be a successful project moving forth, but we are deeply challenged. And hopefully, some of the monies which were donated for housing, there was two and a half billion dollars donated by our largest employer. Hopefully, some of that will come back to the city. And if not, that we'll have some state funding to help with the affordability component, the very low and low income, which is such a challenge. The Veranda, which, which Commissioner Scharf mentioned, almost eight hundred thousand dollars per affordable unit. So we do need the assistance. Thank you.
And that's time. Very good. Councilmember Willie, you'll have two of my minutes.
Yeah, I don't think I need much, just closing statements. And that is, you know, we, we hear from some of our residents that need housing. And we hear that and we'll do everything we can to facilitate that. I'm so glad, so glad that we have brought together this large team. With this large team, we're going to look under every rock. We've got a lot of people with a lot of different ideas. All that's great. We're going to work together. I truly believe we have a sincere desire to do everything we can within the confines of a democratic approach. We're not here to, to just legislate. It's what we are needing to do for the community that the community supports.
One minute.
So with that, I'll close for tonight and say, wish us all well, because it's going to, we're going to be busy on this.
Okay, great. Thank you, Councilmember Willie. And I see we have a hand raised from Commissioner Gannacota, as well as Commissioner Bose. Commissioner Bose, you ceded all but sixteen seconds, so you do have time for a brief comment. And if you need to speak longer, I'll cede you time as well. But Commissioner Gannacota, let's go to you first. You have, you have more than three minutes left, about three minutes.
Yeah, I'll make it brief. My comment is that we need to use the carrot and stick approach to make sure that the things that we approve are being built. Because right now, we approved a lot and there is nothing being built. So we don't have anything to show for from the approvals that were done. So how do we make that happen is something that maybe we can bring B K Ms from other, other cities to ensure that we add that component when we legislate this one. With that one, I wanted to cede my time to my fellow housing commissioners, whoever wants to use the time.
Oh, very good. Thank you, Commissioner Gannacota. All right, so Commissioner Bose, or we'll, we'll go to you next.
So I had a very quick comment. It's going to, probably going to be hard to get people to donate land like ex-Mayor Scharf said. So one of the ideas that may come about, if we can come up with a fund that we can allow people to donate into and give them a tax break. I don't know how that could be done, but if we could come up with a fund that regular citizens can donate monies to and that can help us build housing for the very low and moderately low-income housing, that might be something to think about. Thank you.
Three minutes left of Commissioner Gannacota's time. Okay, so it seems like Commissioner Bose, your comments are concluded. I see Commissioner Tadichari, your hand is up. Commissioner Tadichari, you have twelve seconds. However, Commissioner Gannacota has ceded his remaining two minutes to other Housing Commission members. And so we'll start your time now.
Yeah, in just in closing, I, I think as, as a housing commissioner, and I know as part of the team, of the Housing Commission team, I know we are very dedicated to make sure that we are able to fulfill the RENA goals for low income and very low income and moderate income. So we will do our best to find out ways and means in terms of, you know, creative ways to make it happen. I definitely feel that we need to encourage nonprofits to come and participate in our, in us being able to achieve this. I really don't know how we can incentivize nonprofits, because for-profit may not be able to help us as much as nonprofits can. I think, so that's, that's where I was going. I would like to understand in probably another session, how we can have nonprofits participate and help us achieve our goals. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And that, that's one eighteen of Commissioner Gannacota's time left. I'll go to Commissioner Parish. Commissioner Parish, you had approximately thirty seconds of your time.
Yeah, thank you so much. I, I just wanted to comment that I, I wasn't joking when I said donate. I, I did think that perhaps in the future we could do that. If someone wanted to, say, for example, consider that they would have a bigger benefit by donating a portion of their building to the city as a write-off or something of the sorts, or a part of their inheritance. I know that if we promote it, I, I happen to know people that have no heirs in the future. I just think it's a network and, and a big promotion. I really wanted to emphasize that. I am serious when I said, let's all promote that. I think we can pull a few off. If we just do a few, that'd be fine. I, so I, I, thank you. That's all.
One minute left. Okay, very good. So next, we have Planning Commissioner Saxina. And Commissioner Saxina, you have exactly one minute left and followed by.
Just wanted to cede my time to any of the planning commissioners or city council members who wanted to speak.
Okay, very good. So next, we have Chair Wang from the Planning Commission. And Chair Wang, you have a minute left, as well as the minute that Commissioner Saxina just ceded.
Oh, no problem. I'll keep to it. Look, we have a tremendous opportunity to not only work together here, but also work with other cities to ensure that we have the right balance between growth and sustainability. This isn't going to be easy, and we have to work on one end to incentivize developers to build what they've been allocated and to also encourage the state to pass sensible policies that hold not just municipalities accountable, but also developers accountable. We also do need to preserve the quality of life, ensure that the right infrastructure services are available to support our growth in a sustainable fashion. And I think we need to think about that. What's the impact to schools or traffic environment and next generations as well? Creating opportunities for new, new residents, but also making sure that we don't take away the quality of life for existing residents. So we have to plan accordingly. So it's going to be fun. It's going to be a lot of hard work. It's a challenge. I don't see it as a negative thing. I just think that we have a huge opportunity and a huge challenge at the same time. So that's my closing comments.
Great, thank you, Chair Wang. I guess I'll, I'll just make closing comments. I've got roughly four, four and a half minutes left. I won't use all of it. I want to thank everyone for a great session. I think this is an excellent kickoff to our upcoming RENA cycle discussions. And as we all know, it is a rather large allocation compared to the twenty thousand or so units of housing that we have in Cupertino existing. And of course, when we're looking at B M R units, economically, a certain number of market rate units, if you're looking at it that way, need to be built in order to economically make a given B M R unit feasible. And so I, I think that it is a tall order. It's a tall order across the entirety of the state. But I do think that we have a collective community appetite to try to meet it. I'm looking very much forward to this process. I, I think one of the things that we can take a look at are our laws and the various tools that we have in our toolkit on a local level. So for example, we have been talking about entitlement periods. And I like to take a look at that to see if that's something that we can use as an encouragement to get a particular housing site developed over, you know, foreseeable and relatively, you know, near-term amount of time. That has turned out to be a bit of an issue this time around. I think on the state level, we should also be looking at trying to effectuate laws. And it's not just about cooperation. It's also about respect. I, I think that we have frankly, a wonderful society. And not every single community is homogenous and identical to the next. We are obviously a very diverse city. And I think we should, we should celebrate that and should be celebrated for that. And, and not every place in America has a majority of a particular type of person. So, you know, I, I thank my community members and larger community for respecting and understanding that. I think we do a lot of things well, and of course, as with everyone, we have room to improve as well. So, but on the state level, you know, rather than seeing a, a lot of lobbying money go into essentially maximizing profits, you know, I, I think we can get engaged. We can say something like, why not use those carrots that have been discussed? And for example, if a project that's been entitled on the local level, where the, where the local government is able to really examine those particular areas and say, this makes sense for our locality, why not supplement that with a carrot? To basically say, if you start building or meet certain touchstones within a certain amount of time, we can give you financial enticements to build. So I think those types of conversations between the localities and our state elected officials need to take place. It shouldn't just be deep pockets, having the audience and being able to donate. We have this right. We have this obligation, in fact, to have these types of conversations. And so hopefully, we can bring in our local representatives and have those conversations. And I, I encourage each and every one of us to reach out and think about ways that we can incentivize and use the power of the state in, in a manner that, you know, in my opinion, needs to be upended so that we are really looking to solve this problem. So I, I thank everyone for coming out. This is just the beginning of a process. I think it's been an excellent discussion. And you know, look very much forward to continuing this. And we'll be visiting this topic quite frequently over the course of the next eighteen months. So thanks very much. We will see you soon. I'll remind everyone that we do have a regular council meeting next Tuesday. And so to the members of the public and my fellow council members and Planning and Housing Commission, we'll see you then. Have a great night, and the meeting is adjourned.
Good night.